Call the study session to order for January 12th. Madam Clerk, the call of the roll?
Assistant Secretary Arlene Schiefer.
Here.
Secretary Robert Oon.
Here.
Vice President Arthur Perry.
Here.
Assistant Director Michael Schaefer.
Here. What if they pick us some title to give me, I feel kinda slighted, you know?
Now you know how I felt for awhile.
I don't mind that title.
I'm just kidding.
That's a good title.
I like it, I'm kinda behind the scenes here.
You and I will never be behind any scenes.
I'm partially behind the scenes.
Well, yeah. You should have a point here, Mike.
Bob, you can hide behind half of us. Okay, public comments. Time and place for anyone who would like to speak from the public. Mr. Mosher, I know you have comments on item one and two on the agenda. Is that it, or would you like to speak now as well? Okay, thank you. Organics recycling behavioral study. I see the good doctor is not with us yet.
Excuse me, I'll start in. Yeah, thank you, Ms. President. So as you know, the board authorized staff to, if we're in agreement with Sally Diesel, to perform a behavioral study on the organic recycling program. And really, the purpose of the study is to, you know, learn social behaviors and from that study, we learn what can we do to increase participation in the program. I do want to mention that the presentation that was in your agenda package is different than what's gonna be presented today. One, because after I reviewed it, I talked all with Sally last Monday, it was more on the academic side, it was kinda, I thought it was a little bit challenging to understand. So the one that's with you right now on the screen, and we have a lot of them available for the public, is the one she's gonna be presenting to you, and I think it's a lot, a little more easier to understand. And I think I'd be pleased with the results, I think the findings are outstanding. I also wanted to mention that the Orange County Register has called us about the study, and they're gonna be, they called, they talked to me, they talked to Sally, and they're gonna be doing a story on this as well.
So, Madam, how did they find out about this study?
They get a copy of our, we send them a copy of our GUB outreach when their agendas are posted, and so we, so.
There you go. Is that the first one or the second one?
This is it. She's just gonna, the one that you have right here, we're getting ready to go to Sally. So this is the one she's gonna be presenting to you, the one that's.
Not on our items.
I mean, to the register, which one is?
This is the one, this one, yeah.
So what's on our items is not?
You wanna use the hard copy, the one we have here. So if you need the lights and Sally, I'll.
No, 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 she's.
Um, do we have a remote clicker?
I can't reach it, help me.
We got a remote clicker, so you can, you can put it in there, so.
Almost.
Almost doctor.
Yeah, almost doctor. Come April, call me Dr. Sally.
All right.
Yeah, absolutely. Looking forward to it. Great, well, thank you for your time this morning, and I'll jump right into it. I'm very pleased to report that the program was a resounding success, and I'll talk in more detail about that throughout the presentation. But really, the short, the long and the short of it is that the intervention that I was working on resulted in increased participation, so increased food scrap separation, as well as increased resident support of the program overall, of the curbside organic program. So just as a quick reminder of the timeline here, there were two parts to this study. And the first was looking at what was the effect of the program that comes to Mesa Sanitary District on its own. We had a survey before the curbside bins rolled out and after, and that was June and September. And then, we also had a second part to this, in which I was testing a new, a new set of tools to try to increase participation. So I had that same survey in September, sort of as the before test, and we just finished a survey in December that served as the after. And so here, we were testing norm communication again. And what that is, is simply communicating the behavior of others. So really, the new norms around food waste, that other people in the community are actually separating their food waste. We wanted to see if this would increase participation, because we've seen in energy conservation and water conservation, that this has had an effect, but no one's done this in terms of food waste. So we wanted to see if that could improve programs like this, if they spread across the state. So again, the question we were trying to answer for that first part, was how are households responding to the Sanitary District's organic program? And the short answer was that this was largely a successful program adoption. There are some challenges that remain in terms of maintenance and knowledge about food scrap separation, but overall, let's recap. And the second part, again, was really trying to answer whether these norm communication tools, really telling people what other people are doing, can increase participation. And again, the short answer is yes, it's on an 11% increase in participation, an increase in support for the curbside program, and an increase in other waste prevention behaviors. So as a recap, our recruitment efforts were also successful and aligned with what we predicted we'd be able to bring into the study and keep in the study. So we had about 1,000 respondents from the community for the very first survey, and we were able to keep about 60% of those through the second survey in October. And then, again, for the final survey in December, what we did there was actually send it out to all 1,000 people again, just to get as much information as we could. So altogether, we had about 250, take all three surveys throughout the six months. So in terms of program adoption, I'll talk first about the kitchen pails. As of December's survey, about 45% of our folks in the study had collected a kitchen pail, and this was actually an increase from October by about 30%. And one of the interesting things we found was that people who have a kitchen pail are more likely to report separating food waste. Now, I don't know at this point whether that is because they have a pail, they're separating more, or if they're so gung ho about separating food waste, they're more likely to get pail. But one thing that was really interesting is that most folks are actually improvising, where they are using baby food, baby formula containers, or even a bowl or a Tupperware container from the kitchen, to separate food waste actually in the home. So whether or not they're having a pail, many people are finding ways to adapt. So we also asked folks about the kinds of food that they're wasting, and the number one item that they're finding in their waste bin. And the most common number one food item was inedible food. Now, what this means for different folks can vary. For many folks, it might be food that's gone bad, or that they perceive has gone bad. There's some confusion around expiration dates, of course, but for other folks, it may be something like broccoli stock, where they think, oh, you can't eat that. But in fact, many people will make stewed out of it, or include it in their dishes. So, but that leftovers in grease, things that were intended to be ingredients, or bits of your, on your plates left over after dinner, were significantly less. That's just interesting, to get a sense of what people are throwing away.
Sally, if you want questions as we go, or if you want?
Sure, please.
On that inedible thing, that's curious to me, because I think in my household, the inedible is the stuff that grows its own life.
Right.
After about three months in the refrigerator.
Uh huh.
That would be obviously what people would be looking at there. The other thought I had was that the expiration date, they look at that expiration date and they go, oh.
And then they dump it in the pail.
Right. And I do have some data that I'll be able to, so there's a lot, there's a lot of information in the data that I have here, and it's just exciting, there's a lot to write about and a lot to talk about. One of the things I wanna look at further is some of the data we have on people who are concerned about expiration dates, and whether that actually is panning out in their food waste.
Well, I think in my household, it would be different. I think most of the food scraps are the, you know, like the celery stalks and the fresh vegetable crap, like same thing goes on in the supermarket, you know, where you keep cutting it down.
So you're saying that your household eats more vegetables than my household?
It appears.
It appears. So I have a question, that 45% of the kitchen pails, what number does that represent in terms of pails?
As in, how many pails?
Yes.
So that's coming from our first, so this is just based on the perimeter that we folks, with 45% of that, but more people than that have pails because.
Yeah, that was my second question.
Yeah.
How many pails did we give out from?
We've given up 20, 2300 pails.
So I'm just, just curious, okay.
Yeah.
Do we have more pails out there?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, and I'll talk a little bit about that later in the presentation. But from our, from the point in October, we had about 30, about 30% with pails, and that was with 600 people. So again, about 200, about 200 people from the study. So, and they were encouraged to go and retrieve the pails. We've actually told them that the number of instances that the pail was doing horrible. Some of the things that we've had folks who have called in, said that they can't get here during the hours, that the office is open, if you're working nine to five, it can be hard to get someone to clean out here with a pail. So I know that's a concern.
Did you, did you get any feedback about the pails, negative feedback about the pails? I know for our, for us, it was not a good alternative, so my wife has resorted to glad bags, or, or the good, but did you hear any negative stuff about the pails?
For some folks, they were saying it's difficult to clean them, because there were more like edges and that sort of thing, as opposed to maybe a giant yogurt container or something like that.
Were they aware about the liners that they could purchase?
A number of people had mentioned the compostable bags, but some of the concerns that people had around them was that they're expensive, that they're difficult to find in the right size still, and that if you leave them too long, they start to disintegrate. Of course, they shouldn't be leaving them that long, and that's one of the points of education that I'll be talking about some more as well.
My wife just didn't like it, there's an extra thing on the thing, so we, you know, she's got to go to containers, go in the refrigerator.
Right, yeah, a number of people do that as well, or under the sink. So, the next part, you've actually seen this back in October, where I was talking about the concerns that people had registered, and that household cooperation, getting other folks in the households to participate, having sufficient space at the curb and sufficient time to participate, were concerns for some folks, but by no means a majority. And these symbols indicate, this little arrow means that between June and October, that actually increased. So as people got their curbside carts and started separating food waste, they became more concerned about getting folks in the households to participate. So that makes sense, if they're starting to put this into practice and realizing, okay, I can't get my husband to curbside, or I can't get my wife to curbside, or my kids. But the concerns actually decreased around having sufficient curbside. So for some folks, when they saw the cart out there and they actually were putting it into practice, they were less concerned by the time October rolled around. Having sufficient space, having sufficient space at home, and having enough information to do this, to do this coupleings, again, by no means a majority, and that the lack of, the concerns about having less information actually decreased. So as, between June and October, they're starting to separate at home, they've reduced their concerns about having less information. So more people feel like they know what to do. So again, there were no concerns that were a majority among the population, and I think this speaks to the great efforts that the district has made to get some word out and have feedback and communication about this.
Did they ever bring us the part about the gardeners, or the time to let them know?
Absolutely, that's actually coming up too. These, these comments are from more open-ended questions. So I asked folks to express the biggest challenges they had or concerns. So in terms of percentages, they're, they're relatively small amount of the folks in the survey, but that they did come up multiple times, I thought it was worth mentioning. So then, maintenance of the cart and the pail were a concern for folks, for some folks, as well as odors and flies, but that there wasn't necessarily a connection between maintenance and the development of odors and flies. And that if you are, if you have problems, there shouldn't be odors and flies. If you're taking, if you're taking the food waste out often enough, it won't start to nixify, it won't start to have that odor, and it won't attract flies. So for some folks, they were taking it out, some folks are doing it after every meal. I don't think that's necessary. Every, every other day is about what you would wanna do, and if you're walking to the garage, or to the, you know, outback anyway. So it's really about these new habits and connecting maintenance with the development of these odors and flies. Some folks were concerned that they didn't make enough food waste for the size of cart that there was, and that, you know, they felt silly rolling this mostly empty cart to the curb, but that they were, that they were doing it nevertheless, is encouraging. Some folks were concerned, I have a mention about the cost of the compostable bags, but did recognize that having a liner would improve maintenance. So there are other kinds of liners available, like paper bags, newspapers that people could use, that would also help with maintenance. And yes, that there were a few folks who were concerned about coordinating with the gardeners to separate yard waste. I didn't ask as much about yard waste, as the focus was in, on the food, but that the timing of when their gardeners come, to the timing of when the food, of the organics collection, was a concern for some folks, but, but it wasn't an overriding concern. There's a lot of.
Did you ask any questions about grease disposal, and like, put it, you know, on creatures, or things, or, you know, so?
I didn't ask, but we did have, I did have some folks asking me what they should be doing with their fog, because I know that the district had those jugs and the funnels and everything, and so what, if I were to, you know, when I respond to these folks, what should I be telling them to do with their fog?
Go to OCC.
Yes, yes. So many know that they can take it to OCC.
But it does go, it's a bit short for you.
Right?
Yeah, I mean, some of the misconceptions that kind of come out with these folks is, they think that they can't put yard waste, for example, in their regular bins if they have too much. And I did have people ask me about the grease, well, you know, we can't pour grease in there, I mean, but we do, I mean, once we have yard waste in there, the grease, it kind of settles on that, but we, we would prefer it to an orange toast, I think.
I think, see, I would prefer the fog.
Sure. They would prefer, but it's just whatever's convenient for them, really.
Yeah, I know there was concern about the cart becoming, from having the fog on the floor, so if there was some kind of container to be in, but I don't know what would be people to be protesting against.
I was just seeing what's pretty good about advertising, like during Thanksgiving and Christmas, as far as going and recycling, it's free, come here, you know, that kind of thing.
Right, right. So I also wanted to talk about some of the positive effects that we saw. Many people talked about how they became more aware of how much food they were wasting. I mean, a number of people saying they were actively changing their shopping behaviors to try to waste less food. And from a moral perspective, that's a good thing, we want less food to be wasted, and the food that is wasted to go into their proper cart. There were a number of people who were able to eliminate a trash cart altogether, and saw this as a direct result of having the organic cart, and that there was more room in their trash cart, and they're even using fewer trash bags. And so that might actually display some of the costs of the compostable bags, even if it's not in the mind of many residents at this point, not maybe a. Many folks were also indicating that they were more thoughtful about where their trash goes, not only in how they separate it, but where it goes after that, and that they were more aware of food packaging. So we had a number of people saying, like, I just realized too much food packaging I'm making, and that they started avoiding plastic bags for produce and regular birthday bags as well. So potentially, we could see a reduction in overall waste generation, just from separating, starting to separate food waste. So again, from this first part, this phase A, one of the key findings was that residents were more likely to separate their food waste if they believed that others in the community were doing so as well. So I really tried to look at who, what, what made people more likely to separate, and this was one of the most significant factors that we had. Now, at this point, at the point of phase A, this was in October, I don't know why they had these beliefs, other than they knew it was a community-wide program, or district-wide program, or they'd seen the carts everywhere, but the fact of the matter was that if they had these beliefs, that others separated, they're more likely to do something else. And that's really what the second intervention was all about, was communicating that other people are doing this, most of the other people in the community are doing this, and seeing if that had an impact. So we did this through magnets or digital leads. Some folks don't, didn't have access to internet, or preferred not to use it, and so this is actually exactly what one of the magnets looked like, and the messaging that the folks received at the beginning. And you can see, all it says, that 76% of households in Costa Mesa separated all of their food scraps this week. And so each week, we gave them different, different figures, and they reported their separation to us. And I should mention that this is only for the treatment group. So we had our 600 people, we split them into two groups randomly, and the treatment group received these messages. The control group represents what the community would be doing without this treatment, and as the program that the district has designed would be. So our treatment group will tell us what the effect of this norm communication is, and the control group tells us what would happen without that.
Sally, if we use this green thing, like insert it into the water bill, so if 76% would represent us, well, how would you phrase that, the survey group, or how, you know, how would we serve, to be accurate, how would we say that?
Well, I have, I have different figures, it's actually about 77% at the end, which I'll get to in just a moment, but I'm happy to talk about that at the end, like how we can use this kind of messaging, because I think there's a number of ways.
Because that's a pretty good message, I think.
Maybe 76% of those people.
Right, right. That's what I was thinking, that'd be one of the things you wanna talk about.
Absolutely, and as you're considering expansion to the rest of the district, you may use figures district-wide. So if, you know, to the extent that you have participation rates district-wide, using those figures to communicate to the district, I think.
Yeah, that's another point.
Really powerful. So just to reiterate, this is the only difference between the two groups, is receiving those messages. And what we found was that just from receiving those messages, folks were more likely to participate, and there are two measures for participation. The first was how many are separating, it was on 11% increase in folks who are separating. And the second way we measured was what percentage of the food waste they generate goes into the organic cart. So some folks would put food in the disposal, or in the regular trash if they didn't think it could go in, or in their own composting unit home. So we asked questions about when at home, I dispose of my food scrap separately from my other household waste, and what percent of your food scraps do you think goes into the organic cart? And again, the only, the only difference was that messaging, telling people that other people are doing this, resulted in an 11% increase in participation, and a 7% increase in how much food waste, how much of their food waste is going into the organic cart. And so that's a, that's a very small, it's really exciting to see such a small treatment resulting such a large effect. So to reiterate, we have, this green line represents the control group, that's the group that represents the community as, as the Costa Mesa Sanitary District designed the program, which is already quite high at 66%, but quite stable as well over time, between October and December. And then this orange line is the treatment group who received that messaging, and that's the only difference. And we see this increase from 66% to 77% participation, as a result of this movement. So the bottom line is that communicating these new norms of food waste increased this And then I wanted to cover some of the other, some of the other interesting results. As I mentioned, we have this increased participation, but we also had increased positive perceptions, so an increase in folks thinking that separating food waste is the right thing to do, and an increase in the belief that friends and neighbors are separating their food waste. We also saw reduced concerns, so less concern over having enough information, and less concern over having enough time. And I wanna reiterate, this is just the treatment group, the folks who received that messaging, saw these increases, whereas the control group, the general community, saw no change during this time. And then also importantly, I think, is that people are more likely to support the program in Costa Mesa, our organics recycling program, and also, organics programs in other cities, so there's more broad-based support of these policies. And again, this is only an increase among folks who received this message. So just to dig into that last point a little deeper, we saw the support increase from 63% to 77% in terms of agreeing that they support this program. And it's important to note as well, that people were more likely to support the program if they knew that organic separation improved recycling. And they were more likely to support the program if they believed that, of course, separating food waste is the right thing to do. And this was as of June, and then in December, we found similarly, support was correlated with this knowledge that organics separation would improve recycling, and, and correlated with knowing that the waste in Costa Mesa is separated after it's collected. So the more that people understand this process, the more likely they are to support the policy overall. So this has some important implications for communicating what's being done with waste in the community, and to the extent that I'm sure the district has already been trying to do this, finding new ways or new avenues into the community's awareness of this topic.
Did anyone ever indicate that this eventually would be mandatory to, you know, do something like this?
No, there were a number of concerns that, from a very small handful of people, I would say, about with policing garbage, and, you know, concern that they would be fined for putting food waste into their fashion, but this was, it was minuscule number of people. So, so all these are great results, and the success of the programs indicates that it may be beneficial to expand these tools district-wide. And just to take a look here, we have the 66% separation among the folks I was surveying, which again, was quite stable over time here. And that's just as a result of the program that Costa, that the Sanitary District has designed, which is excellent. And then simply adding this norm communication, this messaging about the new norms of food waste, increased participation over what you could consider the 75% diversion goal. And so if you consider expanding this district-wide, I think there's a lot of potential there. So again, the bottom line we have here is that the community-level food separation is relatively stable, it hasn't been changing from the folks in this survey since, since October. And so that suggests that further action is needed to achieve these diversion mandates. And there's different ways you can go about doing that, but on the one hand, distributing the existing kitchen pails in some, in some fashion, as I mentioned, though, the evidence is somewhat inconclusive there. We don't know if committed separators go out of the way to collect pails, or if having the pail actually increases the likelihood of separation. This, as I've mentioned to Scott yesterday, this is something that I can tease out a little more with the data that we have, to understand that better, but at the point that I'm at right now, I can't say conclusively. So another, another avenue is this, the expansion of communicating these new norms of food waste. And again, there's a number of ways to do that. So the evidence here suggests there's a positive impact with this messaging. One approach is to expand this messaging with no further effort to measure effectiveness, and another would be to expand it with an effort to measure what is the effect of this expansion. And there's a number of reasons that that can be quite beneficial in terms of reporting, either for. um, reporting either for a managing agencies, EPA, or the state, or for reporting, uh, diversion, and, um, education efforts, and outreach efforts to the state. Um, this can be mandatory in some cases to measure, uh, these sorts of efforts. Um, but also, I think in terms of continuing to be a leader of two other cities, I know, um, already people are going to be turning to the district to see how you've expanded, or how you've expanded the curbside organics program to begin with, and they'll be interested in the different, uh, tools that you've used to, um, to, um, gain some money.
You know, I was a little concerned on the part that you said, some people cannot get the pails because they work certain hours, which has been, but how, what kind of percentage is that? In other words, you know, you were talking about, we should maybe, uh, give out some indication that we have pails, if people wanted to, and, and I'm thinking, is there a percentage that maybe we should be concerned about, you know, being got, or?
Yeah, I think there might be different ways to distribute the pails that are outside of the business hours, potentially, uh, mentioning like high school football games, uh, or, um, getting different organizations involved in helping to distribute the pails.
Hmm, there's community, that's what we do.
Yeah.
I, I was thinking more in terms of some, coming up with some kind of partnership with someone like Home Depot, for example, who sells the compostable bags. I mean, if we had, if someone could go into Home Depot and say, hey, yeah, I, I need to get the trash dealt, and it's a sanitary district, they're probably going to go buy something in Home Depot as well, so, I think a partnership would be another way that we could expand that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah.
What I was thinking was, um, people taking their trash, their good things there, and it'd be such a natural.
High school service hours.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, you, you had a list in the original presentation of, you know, fifteen different ways to, to recycle the food scraps besides using the pails. And I think that is important, because I think, well, I don't know, may, maybe you said, well, um, what percentage of the people using, are, are using the pails, and you know what percentage are using little bowls in the refrigerator, yogurt containers, and whatnot. So, I think, instead of just handing out pails, that's not going to get participation, and they may just take the pails. But explaining to them, you know, the, the, the ten different options, and then potentially giving them a pail, and I, I think if we give them the, uh, you know, tell them what the options the community are using, you know, they won't just take the pails.
Yeah, I think.
And we could recycle the pails and maybe get credit for that.
I see, okay. I was going to say, just in terms of, like, the fact that you have existing pails, getting those distributed, you're absolutely right that, um, pails are not necessary, uh, or, so far, it seems that pails are not necessary for participation, because people are adopting in, in these different ways. And if there's something else that can be done with the, existing pails.
And we get credit for the thousand extra ones we add.
How many do we have left?
We got a hundred.
I don't know how many.
Over a thousand, yeah.
Well, the next city that goes on the program, maybe we could offer them a discounted rate on, right Lawrence, I mean, is there something we?
Well, they were a good start, but, you know, the program moving on.
Are recyclable bags okay going in, or against?
As long as they say compostable.
Oh, that's a good question.
Has to say compostable, if they, that's, that, it can't say biodegradable, has to say compostable, that's the only bags they can take.
Okay, newspapers and newspaper bags are fine, too. If the Tennessee Beach County, giving those recyclable bags out, they don't get involved in the law.
Yes, that's, that's, that's the key, that's the key, so. So, I think, um, Sally, let's back, Scott's pretty much right, but, uh, as, as you see, the data from the survey is, is, is quite amazing, I mean, the, the communication, the staff to, to the residents about, um, how their neighbor, or how other people are participating in the program, it, it influences them to participate, and I think that's a spike, so, so, you know, talking to Sally yesterday, I had some ideas of how we can do that, and we can do magnets ourselves, so it's pretty, um, uh, well, inexpensive. Another method we're, we're considering is maybe we interview some, some of the people that are participating in this, in this, um, study, and just their inputs on what did they learn from, um, this program, and what helpful tips can they give out, um, can we put that in our newsletter? Um, I have my, you know, Channel Four News wants to do the study, wants to do the story on, on the organics, and I think it'll also be a good, can you, Channel Four News, interview some of these participants, and how they, they get that.
Push the best a minute.
You know, yeah, so there's, there's, there's a lot of ways to get that word out, so, I think that's the key, and we got to be consistent, continue getting the word out, we just can't, we can't fall asleep on that, so if we continue getting the word out, and letting, reminding residents that, um, it, it's, it's good for the environment, it's, you know, it's, it complies with state law, uh, it's the right thing to do, we can, we can achieve that seventy-five percent.
Larry, what, what percent is, have you been able to determine what percent is being of the, is being diverted, or?
Uh, as far as the organic?
Organic, yeah.
We haven't done any characterization of the organic, yeah.
So, you can see in, in, in the recycling report, um, you have a report on, on organics collected, and at least so far, we, we collect thirty-five hundred tons, so thirty-five hundred tons, that did not go to the landfill, so, um, it's, it's, uh, I think so far, it's been very well received.
Well, this, this thing points out that, you know, there's a popular thought out there on social media, that, that only twenty percent of the people in Costa Mesa are really using the cart. Well, I know it's, I mean, this is, in fact, to me, the sample size is, is pretty indicative of what's going on in the city, I mean, at least from what I see on the street, so, this just sort of reinforces the fact that it's way more than twenty percent.
In, in what you're also seeing is, in support of the study that you just heard about, you know, how some residents, if you put it, feel silly rolling out their partially full carts, you know, so we are seeing, you know, every week, about fifty, sixty percent of those carts that are out there being picked up. I'm sure that a large portion of those are the ones that you said, that, oh, it's only a guy, you know, it's only a third of the way full, so I'm going to wait till next week to go.
I, I think that's really true.
Well, and another, and I don't, and I don't say I got this part of this, of the presentation yet, but, uh, another part of the study that she learned is that a lot of residents, they learned that they don't need that extra cart anymore, and so they're turning, they're giving it back, and that's what we're telling, we're hoping that was going to happen, that was the case, and that's true. They're finding, once again, this program, hey, I don't need that extra cart, I could save a little extra money, especially if you have to remix waste cars, to turn that in.
I, I, on personal testimony, I didn't need that. I mean, I'm not contributing to CRNR that twenty-eight bucks every quarter anymore, so, sorry bud, but it's true, I mean, I, I don't even, in fact, at this point, I don't always fill up the two big ones because of this, so it's, I think it's working.
But Larry, there must be some, uh, uh, level that, that your company's going to shoot for to, uh, make this, uh, business, uh, plan, or, uh, this diversion plan, uh, work financially.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so, I mean, at some point, you're going to do a characterization.
Yeah, when I say characterization, it's to see how much contaminants are in that organics program. We did do a new characterization of the black carts in, in result of the organics program, to see, to see how we're, we're doing. I mean, so we are monitoring that activity.
I guess, is that a, is that public information?
Well, you, I think CRNR, during the town halls, had expected, ultimately, they expected ninety-five percent participation in the organics program, which didn't necessarily break it down by grain waste, or food waste.
That's what Mike Sola told us, did it by conference, he had ninety-five percent.
But, it was time. Did he give you a?
No, he didn't, we were just asking. He thought that it was really, he thought it'd be really high, that ninety-five.
I mean, that, that was their, you know, um, that's, that's been their experience.
So, um, I think that one's, that one had a couple more, if there's one more, um, ahead of the curve. So, I think these are some of the suggestions that, uh, she, uh, mentioned to expand the program, you know, um, incorporate the message in, in all, including newsletters, that's what I was talking about earlier, testimonial, um, I, I, again, Channel Four News, I think that'd be great, Avenue, maybe, maybe some other channels, also, maybe, you know, review organizations in the program, um, so it's really good opportunities here. So, um, I think this is, this is her last slide here, uh, that she mentioned, um, so like I said, we're the first in the way to kind of establish the program, um, so we're, our goal is to get to the seventy percent by, by twenty-twenty, and we're, we're definitely on, on that, on that path. And I think what she also mentioned is, um, you know, we're one of the first to incorporate cultural science into organic waste management, because, I mean, to do the study like she did helps you, um, approve about policies, and without this information, it'd be, it'd be a little more challenging, so I'm kind of, kind of, just doing a, yeah. So, I'm on your last slide here, if you want to, if you want to.
Great, yeah, I mean, this is really just, um, to reiterate how, um, the Sanitary District has been, um, ahead of the curve, in terms of establishing, you know, for some counties, establish, establish a program like this, um, which will put you ahead of the landfill diversion mandates, as well as make you a leader to other cities we're looking to, and other districts we're looking to establish these programs. You're also among the first to incorporate cultural sciences into the design of these programs, and the very first, to my knowledge, in the country to, um, use, rather to test the effects of communicating these new norms of food waste. So, that's, that's really exciting, and especially because we found that it does have an effect. And so, the potential for this to create a cost-effective way to increase participation for this district and cities around the country as they establish these programs is really exciting. Um, and, uh, that it also falls in line with a recent executive order from President Obama to incorporate behavioral science insights into policies, uh, to make them more effective. So, this is already being carried out and at, um, national, um, sorry, federal government agency level, uh, and so, um, in many ways, just ahead of the curve. And so, I'm going to say congratulations, and of course, thank you, that having the opportunity to work with the district, and work with the community, um, to design this, this study, uh, to gain this understanding, has, um, you know, has been so instrumental for, um, my own path, and I just cannot express gratitude enough, uh, for having that opportunity. So, being able to develop, uh, cultural infrastructure and experience to scale this up, to potentially take to other cities, um, and to, um, have this proof and effectiveness that will likely lead to adoption in, in other cities as well. Um, and so, as I mentioned, there's, um, I've attracted a number of other grants from other, um, funding agencies, and I'll be able to generate publications, and I'm in, um, conversation with Cornell University Press to publish a book on, um, municipal organics programs.
You know, like autographed copies.
Yeah.
From the first edition.
Absolutely.
Scott, or Sally, are we, are we going to be doing presentations at some of these conferences?
Yeah, you know, I, I just, I just mentioned that, Sally, you know, on Thursday, uh, we're giving a press, us and CRNR's giving a presentation to the Orange County Recycling Coordinators.
Yeah.
Uh, we're doing that Thursday at, uh, in, in Santa Ana, and one of the recommendations is to the coordinators to bring Sally back, and say, hey, we just finished a study, we just shared the results to the board directors, this would be good for Sally to present to the coordinators, I think this will also be good to present to SWANA. Maybe the SWANA conference, um, be really good, interesting, so, um, we're going to reach out to SWANA, um, and, um, you know, go from there, yeah, so. There's definitely, and, you know, BioCycle's another, another conference, a good one.
Maybe have CSDA do an article on it, uh, on.
That's a good idea, too, yeah, that'd be a good idea, we'll do a, yeah, it's a great idea, we'll do a, um, story on there, and, and.
Yeah.
Well, there's also magazines, uh, Minnesota Fall Greece Magazine, and BioCycle.
BioCycle, I think, definitely some of the BioCycle. Um, like I said, now, which kind of register is going to be doing the story on it, Sally said that this should come out, Lawrence, this afternoon, um, online, and then the print version will come out in a few days.
All right, I'm going to open this up for public comment, Senator Mr. Mosher, wish to make their comment on item, on the item? Yes, please. I'll capture you.
Yes, yes, thank you, President Schaefer, members of the board, my name is Jim Mosher. Uh, as we just heard, social behavior is influenced not just by what people hear from their government agencies, but also what they hear from their friends, neighbors, and relatives, and I wanted to point out, and must be obvious to you, that the new carts I've noticed are labeled CRNR rather than CMSE, and some of the people must be getting mixed messages from their friends, neighbors, and relatives who live in other Orange County districts, that have very similar-looking CRNR carts, and are picked up by very similar-looking CRNR trucks, that have very different rules. In Newport Beach, where I live, and there's actually a street steer Irvine Avenue in some cases to that, where a few houses are picked up by Newport Beach CRNR trucks, and neighboring houses are picked up by Costa Mesa Sanitary District CRNR trucks, and the rules are totally different, because in Newport Beach, admittedly, the lids are a different color, but recycling is for the traditional paper, plastic, et cetera, recycle, that's a no-no to put the yard waste in recycling. People are told to do that, it's very bad thing. More confusingly, in other jurisdictions I know of, for instance, in Orange, where for many years, the CRNR has required the people to have a three-cart system, they have the mixed waste, they have the traditional recyclables, and they have a yard waste container, and they've been told for years, it's a no-no to put your food waste in the yard waste container, and I understand it, because it was intended for alternative daily cover, so I would be curious whether that is still the case, or if the anaerobic suggestion, now operating CRNR is picking that, so those people should be reeducated, and it's a little late to be making the suggestion, but as long as there is a proliferation of different rules, it might have been wise to have the carts clearly indicate what agency is doing the pickup, right, in this all same CRNR. Thank you.
Isn't our local on the, on the lid?
On the lid.
It's on the side.
Well, ours was on the side, but ours is on the lid.
Ours is on the top. Obviously, eventually, by two thousand twenty, they're all have to, they're going to have to all comply with that seventy-five percent, so.
You're going to see some dancing here pretty soon.
It also qualifies a percent, but what, what, what Mr. Mosher said, but alternate, alternated cover, they cannot use green waste as an alternate cover, that's what, that's the difference, and that's what they got to find out, whether you were green waste.
Well, CRNR said, I think in the, uh, town halls, ultimately, there'll be more, many more, or maybe all two-cart systems rather than three-cart systems.
Right, right. And there's no more composting, uh, facilities that being, I mean, rules are hard to, uh,
you know, get opened, and, and I don't, I don't see that happening, so, they got to come up with a program like what, similar to what we have.
There will be some scrambling, for sure, but I'm sure there are probably. Anything else on this item, any other questions for Sally?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much for everything.
Thank you.
Good job. I'm serious about that autograph presentation.
I'm serious, too. Uh, and I'll, I'll mention as well that the, there is a final, final report coming as per the agreement, um, so, you know, five to seventeen report with, with more of these figures put down, so.
That's one we'll get there.
Um, that should be available, um, I think by the end of the month, um, but, um, there's transitions happening, and then, I think it's written, but this is all in the same family, I actually, yeah, I found some of the cycles and changed it on here, and thank you, though. And I will be presenting this, uh, this work as well in March at, um, the Urban Affairs Conference in San Diego, and then also to, uh, conference in San Francisco, the American Geographers, because they're very much interested in food waste and, um, household behavior and these kinds of practices, so.
I, I think your, your, your slide that Scott took out of this presentation about the alternative containers is important to put back in.
Yeah, I, I took it out for the, I was like, wow, you know, too many words on the slide, and people started laughing. It is there in the notes as well, when you have the, the old, uh, the new presentation. And, and I, um, yeah, so, I just want to say thank you again.
Thank you, thank you.
Great, thank you, we'll be attached.
All right, uh, recycling waste diversion reports, Scott.
Any questions?
Um, I, I think it's interesting when you look at the last slide on the recycling tonnages, again, I think it's so indicative of the time of year, and the drought, and everything else, to see that, that's pretty dramatic, I mean, then from eight thirteen down to five ninety-one is, is kind of interesting, but I, I think it's true to the season. That's it. That's usually not happening.
I would suggest another, um, chart which has the mixed waste carts and the organic carts, you know, on the same slide.
Can we put those together or not? You talked about the green waste from the...
Yeah.
From the two areas. If, can we use that green waste for the recycling? I mean, for, say, for the organics. Can they use that, that goes in the mixed cart for the organics?
Um, well, I'd just like to see the total.
Yeah, I did the same, I did the same thing on my, I did the totals too.
Yeah, I'm doing the totals.
Yeah, I did the totals on my sheet.
Yeah.
Same thing.
We're working on that, thank you.
I mean, you know, it's, I think it's just additional combining them.
Sure.
We'll put that on next month. I'll be curious to see the January total on the organics tonnage, to see if Christmas trees do...
Like it?
Yada, yada. Do we count out of organics?
Yes, we will, we'll count on organics, but we'll also, um, in the February study session, we'll, we'll, we'll give you a report on Christmas trees, like how many Christmas trees. We'll give you that report, but that is including as far as the organics.
Okay, good. Um, I'll get open up to public comments for Mr. Mojer.
Thank you again. I may have misunderstood it, but your last month's study session, I had a comment from the board about the first part of the recycling report and the microscopic changes in the reported, um, recycling percent for the district overall. I've lost track of exactly what it's supposed to represent. Uh, and I wanted to point out that this, again, that this little report, as far as I know on these first two pages, the only number that's really a live meaningful number is the total tonnage presented. And this is kind of statistics at its most misleading. The board and the public are seeing numbers that look like they're good to two decimal point, but that tonnage is just being multiplied by statistics numbers that never change here. What Mr. Jones called characterization, and this is the same characterization as has been used at least for the last year, and the same percentages down here for Costa Mesa and for Santa Ana Heights has been used for many, many years. And the only reason the report on the last thing changes from month to month is because sometimes it's weighted a little more towards the Santa Ana Heights and sometimes a little more towards Costa Mesa because one had more tons than the other. But it really doesn't mean anything other than how many tons are collected. The individual things there are not changing or meaningful. And I am now lost track of even what this characterization means because this was a hand of sorting of trash before you had the organics program. And it's showing in here hundreds of tons of green waste, which I assume is an obsolete number. The total trash collected is being multiplied by an obsolete characterization. It's showing hundreds of tons of green waste here, and then separately, this is how much is actually being collected in the organics. I think this page has to be revised, and I'm not sure whether these tonnages are included in those or that's how it's working now, so... I think the board and the public need some clarification of whether this is talking just about the black carts and this is the green carts, or whether they're mixed together on this report or how it's working.
I'll comment. The characterization, the carts, the one with the tonnages, you know, the characterization, it did change. Uh, we did do a new characterization, what was it, about three months ago?
Mm-hmm.
We did a new characterization about three months ago. Yes, there is still green waste because there is still an amount of green waste being put into the black cart, so that therefore you are going to continue to see that. So, that's based on the black cart. Now, the other, the other sheet is based on the, no, the amount of organics being collected.
I did check this morning, I mean, this is the same table that was used last January. And so, I don't think that there's four hundred tons being collected in the black carts that have been taken this...
I think you did do a new characterization, but it may not be reflected here.
I'll check on that. We did do, but you will still see that there is still green waste.
So, the intention is this is the black carts and this is the green carts?
Yes.
Yeah, I think this one is not correct.
Okay, I'll be happy to check on that.
Because you've shown about a ten percent number for green waste in the discharacterization that you showed us recently. So, this is probably a little...
Yeah, but just again, the clarification, the black versus the...
Okay, well, we died in three, the code enforcement report.
I'm happy answering any questions. I do want to mention that I, you know, I had a meeting with Ed and he did say that, uh, we are seeing an increase in scavenging that's occurring in early morning hours, you know, around four or five o'clock in the morning. So, we agreed to, um, uh, reschedule his hours, um, you know, periodically during the morning to address those. He said he'll be working early in the morning so he can, he can, um, approach those scavengers.
You know, that one on Wall Street, he was confronted with two people and they didn't want to comply.
Right, right.
What's his next step?
Well, if they're, if they're being competitive, um, you know, and I told him he's still threatened or still, safety is, they should be called police departments, but, uh, um, I don't think he called them at that. He was about ready, that was the one that he said he was about ready to call, but he didn't have to. I think they eventually did address and, um, he got to move along.
Yeah, he's, you know, well-versed in what to do.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what we're like for there.
My decision is he'll go back, you know.
He'll check on that again.
And, you know, then move to the next.
Interesting that this other site, you know, my youngest brother, Richard Mason, he and his partner went in a truck last week on Monrovia, and this is probably something for our year guys to be aware of, but, because my brother was filling out his paperwork, his partner, there was a guy walking next to the truck, kind of walking up to the truck.
Mm-hmm.
And my brother's partner says, the guy's reaching for a gun. The guy actually had a gun in his waistband and this, my brother said he saw the guy, like, dude, put the clip in it or whatever. So, fortunately, the truck was running, my brother called dispatch and got out of there, but it's just an awareness, and I think we're fortunate that Ed...
Wall Street and that area over there, that's a rough area. I mean, there's some bad actors and...
That was kind of the characterization of my brother, that it was, it was kind of scary. Yeah. Just, just something for all, that, the only reason I bring it up is like you said, I think we're fortunate that Ed's got the training that he's got and he can handle something like that, so, okay. All right, uh, item four?
Um, yes.
Um, we met, was it last week or the week before last? So, we just had a meeting, Director Furman and I and staff, and we'll meet again next Wednesday, I believe, is the next scheduled meeting. And what we asked staff to do is come back to us with some ideas on how to do the state of the district, whether we're going to do it live and in person, uh, whether we can do a newsletter, a postcard, or a video, or whatever. So, next week we'll have a better idea of which direction to go. Um, we'll look at the costs associated with each type of program that we do. Um, so, we'll have a better, a more concise report, I think, next month for the study session, be ready to go with whatever you guys decide.
Is it like a morning practice, one of the options?
Yes, yes, that was, that was...
I was curious.
Interesting that, uh, Tom Hatch is giving, Tom Hatch is giving the state of the city address, I think, next week or...
I think that's it.
No, they're doing it at Hillcrest.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Yeah, but I was curious that Tom's doing it.
If you have one draw on people.
Well, my feeling is they don't want to draw on people. That's probably true.
Well, certainly, certainly.
Okay. I don't know. The one that we were in that night?
No.
No, no, there's the big, the bigger one.
The larger one.
Okay. Well, the problem they have, Chris, is there's absolutely no place to park.
Oh, yeah. You park it at school, yeah. Are you also, um, looking and addressing where the location was for you to...
Yeah, that's all, all, we have staff for that, that's, so we'll have a better report for you.
What time is that meeting, that ad hoc meeting next Wednesday?
It's ten, I believe.
Is it ten, ten?
Yeah. Send tomorrow, maybe? No, we need to tend tomorrow. Is it ten tomorrow, or is it... Ad hoc meeting?
Um...
How do you do it for me? I have this at ten tomorrow.
It's at ten.
Yeah, that's true. I thought you said it was... I didn't look yet. That's not tomorrow yet. It's not tomorrow yet? All right, um, then we'll move to item five.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, so, back in two thousand, two thousand six through two thousand nine, when the last time the districts, um, televised our entire sewer system, and as a result of that televising the system, uh, we were able to identify two hundred fifty-five grade five type sections that under, um, industry standard means imminent failure. And because of that, due to that information, we were able to come up with a plan and repair those two hundred fifty-five grade fives, um, which are now completed. Uh, that two thousand six, two thousand nine televising also identified sixteen hundred grade fours. And, um, it's about industry standard, I believe Rob corrected me wrong, but every ten years you should CCTV the entire system, so it's about ten years now, and it's a good time to determine if those, how many of those sixteen hundred are now grade fives, so we can also plan a pack and repair those sections. So, what we did is we went out and did an R and P, uh, the qualified vendors that have experienced televising sewer systems, uh, and we end up receiving, as you see on page two in your staff report, we end up receiving, um, four firms as many proposals, and we requested, um, three for each firm. We requested, uh, what were the costs to televise the entire system in one year, two years, and three years? And you can see the cost, um, by the, um, four, four companies. Um, I do want to mention that Houston Harris, um, they were non-responsive on years two and three because they didn't add, they didn't add it correctly, so, um, we considered them non-responsive. So, um, uh, the district engineer, Rob Hammers, myself, and our wastewater maintenance superintendent, Steve Connaughton and I, we evaluate all of those using the best value criteria. And right now, the preliminary best value is professional pipe services, uh, which is also the low bid. Um, they have, uh, a fleet of forty-five CCTV trucks. Um, they said they're ready to begin next month. Uh, one of the criteria is we said that all the technicians have to be certified by NASCO, which is the industry standard for pipeline assessments. Um, they use the latest inspection software that we require, which is Green Pin or Pipe Legends. Um, and they are currently, they definitely have the experience, they are currently televising five hundred miles of the City of Los Angeles wastewater system, and they just completed inspecting two hundred fifty miles of the Los Angeles Sanitation District system. And they are locating Orange County, which is, which is nice. Uh, we are meeting with them tomorrow. Uh, they asked for some further information. I've also asked if possibly they can bring one of the CCTV trucks here so we can look at it. Um, so, uh, Rob, myself, and Steve will be interviewing tomorrow, so if all goes well tomorrow, then we will come back with you in January with an agreement and recommendation to award a two-year contract, which professional pipes are, we are recommending to complete it in two years. Um, and that is because, you know, they have to, um, they CCTV it right after we're cleaning the system, and so, um, uh, after talking with Steve and Rob, we can believe it'll be, um, a lot easier to manage if it's CCTV in two years. And now it costs us, um, three hundred and twelve thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars, six cents annually. Uh, as I mentioned in the financial review, we did budget seventy thousand dollars in each fiscal year. So, when we come back in January, we'll be recommending appropriation of two hundred forty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars, six cents out of the facility involving fund, which has adequate funding for this, uh, program. Uh, no need to take action, she's a real FYI, and they have three question jobs, they have questions to do.
Why is two years and three years the same?
Um, that was just, that was the proposal they said, it's, uh, we asked for, um, what would it cost, um, per foot? Um, and that's what they, it's... What it came up with is, uh, there wasn't even any cost difference between the one and two years, so...
It's basically the same amount of work, whether you did it all in one year or whether you divided it up into three years. So, some people said, uh, it doesn't matter when I do it, it's still the same price. So, that's why.
Because it's such a huge thing.
Why did we only budget seventy thousand?
Yeah, that's, um, I think I'll take, you know, that was my, my area. That was going based on, um, what the Newport Beach was budgeting and how they did it, and I misinterpreted what, how their program was. They're, they're not CCTV the entire system. Um, it's basically a seventy five... Seventy thousand dollars. They, they used to have an in-house CCTV group, and that's what this is to replace that. So, they're not CCTV, they're just like CCTV, like hotspots and the other required, it's not going to be CCTV powered system, so...
Well, plus it was over like a ten-year period.
Yeah.
Five and ten years, so, uh, Scott was trying to adopt their, their way of having it, uh, a small amount yearly over a long term rather than upfront and fast.
Two hundred forty-two thousand is kind of a big number.
It's a big number. Well, it's, it's, actually, honestly, it was a lot less than we anticipated. I think we were, we were anticipating really... Could, yeah, national plant service is close to a million dollars, I think that's what we're risking, and it could be around a million, but at six hundred twenty-three thousand, six hundred twenty-five thousand dollars is a pretty good price, really good price.
We paid, we paid millions to do the CCTV the first time because they had so much heavy cleaning.
Well, that's silly.
This time they shouldn't have that.
Plus, we're, we're cleaning.
Yeah.
We're cleaning and, uh, so there won't be any cleaning costs.
It was going to be on board, we, yes, hopefully on board this year, so it's just, that's why I answered any questions, and, um, if you're comfortable, we can, um, approve the contract in a couple of weeks.
Yes, it's only going to be there?
Yeah.
More than... You know, do you have a plan to where we're going to take this money?
Yeah, yeah. It's in the stack portion, we would take it out of the facility involving fund, so that's where the money will come from.
Is that the same money that would have been used for the building?
That was discussed, yeah.
That was discussed.
Um, well, it took us, let me just ask one more question. It took us a long, 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 long time to get after the grade fives after, you know, we had the David the last time. Was there any way, Rob, we can, um, did you ask for things that even look greater than, you know, worse than a grade five and imminent failure?
We, we did that last time, meaning that when there was...
Oh, yeah, okay.
When, when the operator's in the truck and he sees something that's bad news, he takes a picture of it, and that gets to me. And Scott and I worked together and we repaired quite a few things...
Right away.
While we were doing the grade fives and going back and looking at videos, when I saw something that was really bad and about to go, I sat down with Scott and he approved every single one of them, and we took care of a dozen or so.
Okay. But the other, the other... The other two hundred seventy-seven took...
Three years.
Five years. Well, it took three years, three years of contracts, but it was a substantial amount of time in the preparation of it, the analysis of the data, and so, I would like, you know, grade fives are important to get after. I know, I know you agree with that. So, I'll be watching.
Do you think Rob would expect any less?
Watch out.
Okay, any other questions for staff? All right, let's move on to the elephant in the room.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, um, you know, we are in escrow right now for acquiring the building at two ninety Halloween Avenue. Uh, we just finished the, um, the building inspection report, which is in your, in your stack portion, so, uh, we do need some direction on how you want to address these recommended improvements. Um, do you want the seller to make those improvements, or do you want, um, to have the seller mark off, uh, you know, the estimated cost of repair and just knock that off the selling price? Um, I also wanted to bring your attention after, after the building is in good condition, um, according to the report, um, there were just a couple of, um, items that caught my attention. Uh, one of them was the HVAC system, there's eight of them on the roof, or just two here. Um, five of those eight HVAC systems are going to run out of life expectancy within five to eight years. Uh, replacing one of them is about eleven thousand dollars a piece. Um, I was supposed to have a maintenance cost in that yet?
No, the guy was up there yesterday, he's going to get that.
So, I don't have a maintenance cost. We have a guy up there yesterday giving us a cost, what do we use for annual maintaining eight HVAC systems? Then the roof was another big issue. Um, the life expectancy for the roof was another, possibly another five to eight years sitting on the new roof here. So you're going to have to do a new roof here quite soon. We had a roofer come out there to give us an estimate of what the cost we placed at, and unfortunately, we don't have that number for you until soon. Other news, as far as the city goes, good news is that all we're, listening, all we need to do is, the city needs to do is issue a minor conditional use permit, which will go to the planning commission in February on a consent item. So that's good. I don't know if they're making a big deal of that. Yeah.
Why wait till February? Oh, that's next month.
Yeah, next month, yeah.
Couple weeks. Is that outside of our days of...
That's for...
We have to make a decision.
Yeah, it's, we have to think about it in the month, we have to commit in the month. And that is because there's not enough parking spaces according to the square footage of the building. $11,000 square feet, we're supposed to have 44 parking spaces, that's 41. So they just have to use a minor conditional use permit. And then I need to coordinate with the fire department building as far as putting a charger there for the vault. You know, the idea was to bring co-enforcement into that building, bring the vault over there, so I just have to work with them.
With that parking space requirement, eliminate that sort of kind of storage facility?
I don't think we need a storage facility, because there's plenty of storage inside the building. I talked about for like the fence and...
Code enforcement.
Oh, for like a storage unit?
Is that part of the city?
No, it's not something we'd have to work on. I, you know, yeah, I haven't gotten what that would look like. We definitely want to put something to secure the car there, maybe like a light chain or something, but that might just take up one parking space where the car is going to be.
I would rather see this personally, not worried about that now, but after we get on the road, then reapply to the city.
Right, right.
Because it's not, I don't think a minor CUP is going to not pass, but I'm knowing that we don't have any friends on the planning commission. They might bring it up for discussion, simply because...
Yeah, we don't have a better plan. Now, as far as the recommendations on the building inspection report, before you give us any directions, that's why we have our advice on here, it's closed session, which is recommended by the district council. We could talk about it in closed session if you want to.
I appreciate it.
Okay.
Have you been able to...
Yeah.
Obviously, I'm pleasantly surprised with the report. Jim, you're the expert. How did you feel about it?
It's, you know, it's typical things that, you know, the roof and the HVAC. And really, five to eight years left in the life of a roof isn't that bad, that head off the bat, you know? Could you probably get a little bit more out of it if you went and buffed it up, you know? And, you know, maintained it a little bit. But there are, there are issues that were brought to light here, that I think the seller is responsible for. And it's always easier to just get a number and knock it off the price, instead of expecting him to, you know...
He can turn it in.
Right. I mean, that's, as far as I'm concerned, that's the only way to do it, you know?
I mean, that's from my, I think I agree with Jim. Don't you, Jack? I think we had a pretty thorough inspection, only from the standpoint that he pointed out the two lights out in the front not working. That's pretty darn good. If he picked those two lights not working...
But, you know, some of the windows need to be replaced, and, you know, you gotta, that's gotta be right, you know?
Yeah, exactly.
I also want to mention that we also learned that there's a utility easement, a gas company easement on the property, and it's in the back of the building. So you know, one of the executive offices, and it's that kind of like that, that landscape in the back there, looking at running in that area all the way down to where the trash and cleaners is, and around the tile water property as well. So that's where I, you know...
Is that underneath that property or on the side of it?
It's on the side, it's on the side. Yeah.
Will they have a pipeline?
Yeah, they must have a pipeline, yeah.
We have to...
Do they have a port route?
Well, I don't know, sometimes they go all over the place. Then they may have had it there before the building. We have to get this in the asset management program to change what are, to get a realistic evaluation, or get another evaluation for what these costs, the maintenance standards.
Hey, any other questions?
You want to go to closed session?
Yeah, then I, at this point, will adjourn the meeting to a closed session. Conference of real property negotiators for the 290 Paul Arino Avenue. Director, it is requested.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay, we are reconvened to open session. And regarding Conference of Real Property Negotiators on 290 Paul Arino, there is no reportable action at this time. Future study session items? One thing, I was reading in something about CalRecycle just designated Huntington Beach to be a hub for recycling. Can you get us some information on what CalRecycle or have a list with, is that first thing? Find out what this is all about?
Mike Carey submitted it on Facebook.
It was Mike Carey on Facebook, that's right.
This morning, so, yeah, he didn't explain what it was, but it's given Huntington Beach the opportunity.
They had a couple of other cities listening there, but just curious to see what it's all about.
An update on Mike Carey and the...
Orange Coast. Yeah, it's probably time for an Orange Coast update.
I mentioned to you, I think, that the city's got a grant or something to improve that swale on Arlington.
Yeah, you mentioned to us.
And I don't know if we should stick our big nose into it, but we ought to probably at least look at it, because it's, you know, it could affect something. You know, it's a storm drain is what it is. But it's an open storm drain, and I don't know what they're going to do with it, but we ought to at least have Rob check with them, make sure that everything's still aesthetic.
Know where that is.
Right by the fair.
Yeah.
Obviously, in close to me.
Increase the capacity.
Now, are they, you know, because with the stadium going in, they're going to have bathrooms there.
Yes.
Is that going to, or are they going to draw the sewer from it?
Well, there's a line, there's a line there's right there, yeah.
Remember, we gave them okay to put it up, the building over the line? I thought they, I thought they said, "There's a big deal about the football stadium."
Well, there's no locker room. That's, they have to have a...
And there's not an estate, CD?
Yeah, there's, it's like a thousand seats.
So they're not going to be able to play varsity games there?
No. Not initially. But there are spaces on either side for 400, 400. So once, you know, at a different time, you know, roofs can be put in.
I'm just thinking of the sewage part of it first, you know, because they're going to have to tie in.
They'll have to probably give Orange County sanitation approval, because that's a, it's a main line that goes through there. They put it right through the school, right out towards the fields, and then it went right down that...
Were you aware of that stuff? Yeah, they're putting stadium in.
Well, I know about, I heard about the stadium, yeah.
But they're going to have to tie in with the bathrooms or something.
Yeah.
That's for the public.
That's a different issue than what I was talking about.
Yeah, yeah.
Anyway.
But we should have Rob make ends up with Arlington.
Yeah, I just, you know, make sure we're all on the same page.
Got it.
I'd like to see the, you know, the Mendoza pump station records, the Steve Fairgrounds is, you know, still doing there, still keeping the rainwater out of the sewer.
Is it close to Mendoza pump station?
Yeah. And the truth of the matter is, with this El Nino, it looks like it's going to be nothing deal.
Did you have any problems last week? Did you guys know that power at my house went out twice on Tuesday morning?
It did get attacked.
So you never got it?
During the rain?
Yeah, it went out for about three or four minutes, and then it came back on, then it went off again for about five minutes.
Lights been flickering.
We had issues with power at Geesler and Eldon, so... A couple of other stations.
Geesler probably, yeah.
I had it on my side.
Did you guys get notified right away?
Oh, we got notified from our state.
That's right. But no other issues?
What about that person that lives behind Adams Street that's for a pump station? Have you ever heard of them? Never heard a thing from them. Never did.
I was looking at that, I dropped down.
I tried, I was, because if you go like 100 yards, they have a, for the Orange County sanitation district, or the Orange County, like, so that little place you could pull into, if it were the generator, you have to. But it's 100 yards, that's quite a bit of a sound.
I have two comments.
You're on.
Okay. One is on our Lepinta deal, they're billing us for the 24th, and we're not going to be there the 25th.
We're going to be there the 25th. And so here, it says the 24.
It's one set price for the block of dates.
Oh, it is, okay. I was just as worried that maybe we'd get off, so, okay.
I'll see if it's the year. They'll get every nickel out of that hand, you know?
Well, we'll go. Yeah, I'm going, but when is that?
It's January 24th to the 27th. I have not registered yet, so do you want to go?
Yeah.
Okay.
You didn't register.
We're going the 25th and 26th.
I did not.
Yeah, and then we're leaving the 27th at lunchtime. Okay, the other question was, does everyone get this key lock, you know?
Oh, that's one.
Go on, yeah. She gets it?
I guess, they register us individually as members.
Yes.
But we're billed, I mean, I'm billed.
No, you're paying for all the rest of us.
I'll take that, Scott.
Okay. One dollar.
Well, you guys get one?
Is that one?
No. I used to get one today. I was, you'd be the only member.
We're all members.
The agency, and I'll remember.
Well, we all should have a pay, too.
No, not like...
Maybe they're just going to bill me?
Scott, would you do me a favor and find out from SDRMA what's going to cost us to